About a good thing. Budgeting is going to be incredibly important. The jail can be built without a millage. I hope we start hearing that. I would like to have that next meeting not virtual, but another public meeting. So the public can, you know, be watching this. That is the way government should be open, you know. Government should be open and transparent. So those are just some of my concerns, you know, as how this is going to happen. So, yeah, it was a good meeting, a breath of fresh air, that you don't need to come to the voters for money, but you still have people that are talking it. So it's not good that they're talking it when there's not a need for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment. Hearing none, we'll move ahead with our agenda. At this time, approval of the written agenda. Any member of the Board of Commissioners may ask for an item to be removed from the consent agenda and placed under items for consideration. Hearing no such request, as any commissioner wishes to change the agenda additionally. Hearing no such request, the agenda is approved as written. Various correspondents, does any commissioner have correspondence they'd like to share with the board? Hearing none, consent agenda, Commissioner Smelker.
Mr. Chair, I would move for the approval of November 10, 2025, Board of Commissioners' meeting minutes.
Is there support? Motion by Smelker, support by Hatfield, for all items listed on the consent agenda. Discussion is not allowed and a roll call vote is required. Those in favor, vote aye. Opposed, vote nay. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Bassett.
Aye.
Carlton.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gaddis absent, Hatfield.
Aye.
Smelker.
Aye.
Tunison.
Aye.
And Jackson.
Aye. The motion is approved. The consent agenda is approved. Presentations, we have none this morning, and public hearings, we have none this morning. Items for consideration. The Chair would entertain a motion for approval of the claims in the amount of $125,383.91. Motion by Carlton, support by Bassett, for approval of claims in the amount of $125,383.91. Is there discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Carlton.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gaddis absent, Hatfield.
Aye.
Smelker.
Aye.
Tunison.
Aye.
Bassett.
Aye.
And Jackson.
Aye. The motion is approved. Item B. Haven't seen these very often, but...
No, we don't get these very often, but good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioner. As part of the FOIA policy, you have the responsibility to hearing appeals of decisions made by the FOIA coordinator. We received a FOIA on 11/10 regarding documents related to Mr. Ellsworth's separation settlement from the prosecutor's office when he left for Kalamazoo County. We requested the information from the prosecutor's office about what's in their files. I'll let Julie address that. But after back and forth on a few things, we presented some additional information that we had from the admin office. At the same time, we received a separate FOIA related to the admin office. So we had an original FOIA requesting all information, then we had a follow-up FOIA. We responded to the follow-up FOIA with all the information that we had in our offices. I'll let Julie address hers. We asked if that was sufficient to answer the original FOIA. The response was no, she would still like to move forward with the appeal. After discussing with our attorneys, we're going to recommend that you approve the appeal, and we're going to issue everything that we've issued under the second FOIA, under the first FOIA that would need recourse to the first FOIA. To our knowledge, that's the only thing that we have related to this issue. But I will let Julie get into more depth, and I know that, I believe the petitioner's here in the room, too. So, Julie, does anyone want to add?
Yes, thank you. Julian Atford Pratt, Berry County Prosecutor. A couple of things I just wanted to note, to note. We did deny it only to the extent that what Ms. Morrisek is asking for doesn't exist in our office, but I want to make a couple of points of clarification. She did ask what I, I think she asked what, and I don't know if this is her, but what I mean by maintain, with the implication that I think she thinks I destroyed something, or do I have a retention schedule for things like personnel records? So that's one thing I want to clarify, is I don't keep personnel records on my employees, be that right, wrong, or indifferent, or if somebody agrees or disagrees. They do something great, I tell them. They do something wrong, I tell them. It's worked great for 13 years, but that's another matter. I don't have them. I never have, and I just don't. I did, though, scour my office, because I'm not the only prosecutor, and I went back several decades, actually. And the only ones I could find were Dale Crowley, who you may know was here many, many years ago, decades ago, and Chris Ellsworth didn't even work here. So there's no file by myself, Tom Evans, who was my predecessor, or from what I could find from Shane McNeil. Either way, the other thing I want everybody to know is I took the FOIA a specific way for what this is worth. When she sent me a FOIA, it said settlement agreements, separation agreements. To me, that means that Chris left under a certain color and that we had some kind of an agreement. I took that quite literally. There aren't any. He left under a magnificent circumstance. He's a fabulous person, and we'd have him back in a heartbeat. I don't have any of that, and I never will on him. But her other sentence says, "or similar documents," which number one is vague, and number two, if one took that as literally as you can, to me that goes, and this is a lawyer in me, to me that goes back to settlement agreements or separation agreements. I don't have anything of the sort. So there's no personnel file and no paperwork that she's described in her FOIA to me. So that ended up getting denied, and then it appears as if she wrote a... She did ask me, is there any other department? And I believe I said something like tri-administration. It's in the packet, I'm paraphrasing. She did, and she did receive some documents regarding, I think, his, Chris Ellsworth's step increases and things like that over the years. So the other thing I just wanted to note from the packet is that she has requested that I review. I have a policy in my office that if any citizen, victim, police officer, anybody wants me to review something, that one of my prosecutors made a decision, that I'll review it. So I will, she asked me to, and even though it was a few years ago, I'll do it. So I can't really speak to her statement in there about how I got appointed special prosecutor and our office denied it, because I haven't reviewed that denial. Although I will say, I had many conversations with Chris Ellsworth about this case, and just on those conversations, support his decision, but I'm happy to review it. But I saw that in the packet, so I wanted to note that, and I'm going to be careful what I say about that, because I haven't done it. She just made the request recently. So I just wanted to note a couple of things. I get the feeling she thinks there's something in my office that there isn't. And so I, I'm real good with my requesters. People will tell you that. I'm real good with my FOIA requesters. I call them, we talk if I can understand something, because so many times, I'd say nine times out of 10 or more, I find out that maybe somebody wrote something a certain way, and we, we work together. Our office is generous, we try to do things electronically. If we sense that somebody doesn't have a lot of money, we try to work with them. But in this case, I mean, I talked to her, we've emailed. We're good about that. I don't have anything. We're transparent. We want to help people. You know, we want to get our FOIAs filled, and I can reassure everybody that we did that. But it does sound to me, too, using the word appeal, that we're here for an appeal, that she did get everything that the county has that they can give her that's not exempt or that exists. So I agree wholeheartedly that the, with the, I did, I also read the attorney letter, and I would agree with its, with the recommendation. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Megan Moore. I'm the one who made the appeal request. I come to you today requesting the appeal based on full transparency. I did make the request for the entire personnel packet of Mr. Ellsworth, who used to work here at the Berry County Prosecutor's Office. The terminology she mentioned, the request for settlement agreement, that type of thing, that's merely a standard ask when asking for types of prosecutor files, when you don't know what's in them. I've been told that that's a pretty standard ask, so it wasn't that I was being accusatory. It's just something that's asked when you're asking for a prosecutor's file. Again, this is just a request for transparency with the prosecutor's office. I do wish to point out the fact that my FOIA request was originally denied with the statement that no files exist. I did submit another request by email to the FOIA office, asking, okay, can I have your retention policy, please, then? Because he's been 18 years with Berry County, and there's no records that exist. They started looping Ms. Pratt, the head prosecutor, in, and then all of a sudden, I put in the other request, I made the appeal, and all of a sudden, they're saying, oh, wait, there are some documents that may exist. So my fear is that there's been a real lack of transparency and that there's other records there that they're not being forthcoming with. And again, that's just because as soon as I submitted the appeal for this, all of a sudden, I got an email with very limited step papers that stopped at 2011, actually, and no other documents for a guy who's been with this county for 18 years. And then she said, well, my office doesn't hold them. And then she said, oh, well, my office, or I believe it's your HR, could possibly have them. And then all of a sudden, these limited documents appeared. So all I'm asking for is full transparency. If he's got more to his personnel record, which 18 years he probably does, I'm asking for those documents. I mean, it's a simple FOIA request. So I included those emails and everything in there, so that's what I'm asking for.
Thank you. And I've, I've reviewed this with both county administration and with Ms. Pratt to see if there are records, what the process was, what the HR policies was, and literally Berry County does not have a centralized, Berry County administration does not have a centralized HR department to hold those records. So it is up to individual departments to maintain those records if they wanted to keep those. I remember Mr. Ellsworth, I've met him on a few occasions, but he was here, I know he parted on good terms. We were sad to see him leave, because he had a very good career with us. But as I've looked into this, I don't see that there's anything as far as a separation agreement or anything else that we're missing there.
Okay.
Because I agree with you, that transparency is a paramount for government, and we'd love to provide any information possible for, for you on that. I just, as I've looked into it, as administrations looked into it, I don't see anything in-depth that we're missing outside of what's been provided. So I apologize that there is, you know, what appears to be limited transparency in there, but those files just don't appear to exist.
So the ones that were found, the few step ones that were sent to me, are you, were those...
Talking about, you're talking about employment as far as pay?
Yes. Were those the HR department, then, or Ms. Pratt's?
There's no HR department, so it would come through administration.
That's payroll records from administration, so the step increase documents. And as she further clarified and asked questions about her original FOIA after we provided the denial, that's where administration, when we have payroll records, that would suffice for, that was what we have for a personnel file. We don't hold anything else centralized. That's the only responsibility we have, so we would have, that's what we have.
So then, just to clarify, though, the last date on those was 2011.
Probably when he hit his, he hit his top step, so at that point, there were no other step increases.
Okay. So then, is it, for the record, is it that Ms. Pratt would be the one that would hold the records, and that those records do not exist, any more records on his personnel file?
My understanding is that there are no additional records on his personnel file.
Okay.
Is that accurate?
As a, as a co-employer, what the prosecutor's office is, they keep, they would keep the personnel files for their employees, if they kept any. It'll be probably a different practice across the county. Each department probably has different things they keep, things they don't have, things they don't create. We don't have a standard evaluation form process across the county. Those are all discussions we can have. But once again, as elected officials, they are responsible for their offices. So Ms. Pratt has said that she does not keep any personnel records on her employees. So at this point, that's what we're going to say. When we looked everywhere we could, and there are no additional files, to our knowledge at this point.
In addition, I did ask for the retention policy, which I have not received for their office, and there is a generic statewide retention policy of about six years. So the fact that, I would like to see their office retention policy, then, because if there, if they have some other retention policy that allowed her to get rid of possibly personnel files of somebody who just left in January, that's all I'm asking for, is the retention policy, if those files no longer exist.
I would just say that if she's saying that I got rid of something, I not only resent it, I'm done with it, I didn't get rid of anything. So if she's talking about me, I don't even know what she's talking about retention. I can't retain something I never had in the first place.
All I'm asking for is retention, then, is a retention policy. I'm not saying she necessarily did. If her prior predecessor did, if those, 18 years, 18 years with the county, and there's no, you know, when you apply for any position, you'll have an educational record, you'll have a certificate of where you got your bar license, or your license in general, 18 years as, as a licensed attorney, and there's nothing but a step, but step paperwork in this file. That's what I'm being told. So all I'm asking for is if, if they no longer have the files, then, then, you know, give me your, your retention policy and just let me make sure it's kosher.
I just want to say one last thing. There's only two instances in 13 years that I can think of where I got the distinct impression that somebody just simply doesn't like my answer. And my answer to that is, I don't know what to tell you. I, I'm not even going to apologize, because I don't have to apologize. We do have, the state bar gives us retention guidelines on criminal files and on family court files. That's it. I don't remember anybody telling me that I have to maintain. I have Dale Crowley's files. He was here way back in the early 2000s, late 90s, but I don't have, Mr. Evans didn't maintain anything I can find, Mr., but my, I guess I'm going to circle back to my point. In 13 years, I've only had two people, two people, give me the strong impression that they simply just don't like what I have to say, and I, I'm, I'm done. I don't have anything else I can tell you of.
Sir, I believe she's taking this personally. This is just a standard request, the standard forms that I've been asking for, that's all. I've made requests to plenty of other counties, and so I don't mean for her to take it personally at all. That's not what this is. I'm just asking for the standard paperwork, that's all.
Okay. Eric, do we need to do anything with this, other than, I mean, we can review this and do a formal written response to this, if that's what's required?
Our recommendation is that you approve the appeal, and then the issuance will be, will be a written letter that you would sign with the information that we've already been provided, we've already provided through the payroll records. Now, we can provide this, we follow the standard retention policy for the state. So there's nothing specific we have in, as administration, so that's, that would be our recommendation, and that's your attorney's recommendation as well.
So if I understand this right, the motion should be for the approval of the appeal?
Yes.
And then you're going to, county administration is going to handle it from there?
Yeah, we'll have a letter for you to sign, you know, laying out the information, and we'll have the attachments within, which we've already provided to her, but we will still do that under that appeal.
And just to clarify, I have not received any kind of retention policy, so if you're going to add that to that?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Megan. The Chair would entertain a motion for approval of the appeal from Megan Moore for all potential documents in the possession of the county. So moved. Support. Motion by Tunison, support by Hatfield, for the approval of the FOIA for all potential documents held by the county. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Campbell.
Aye.
Gaddis absent, Hatfield.
Aye.
Smelker.
Aye.
Tunison.
Aye.
Bassett.
Aye.
Carlton.
Aye.
And Jackson.
Aye. The motion is approved. Thank you all for your information and participation.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you? How is everyone?
A little damp this morning, but not bad. We need some rain, so, and it's not snow.
I'm not here for anything exciting today.
I saw that.
I'm here for something really boring. Seeking permission to join two of our MERS retirement divisions that are specific to the telecommunicators or the emergency communications officers. They have two separate divisions right now, same retirement, but those separate divisions were due to, based upon date of hire and what percentage they contributed to their retirement benefit effective January 1st of 2026. They will all pay the same amount. So that's a recent development through our latest collective bargaining process, and so that's why I'm here before you today, because there will no longer be the need to carry two separate divisions.
Okay. Any questions from commissioners? This looked pretty straightforward, reading through it, so. John, you're on that board, any information or insight, or?
No, I'm all for this. I sat in on negotiations there, too, and was negotiated with the unions.
Okay. Seemed pretty straightforward to me. The Chair would entertain a motion for adoption of the attached MERS-defined benefit plan adoption agreement and custom definition of compensation to merge divisions 23 and 24 for central dispatch telecommunications with a required employee contribution of 3% effective 1/1/26. So moved. Motion by Smelker, support by Hatfield, for adoption of the attached MERS-defined benefit plan adoption agreement and custom definition of compensation to merge divisions 23 and 24 for central dispatch telecommunications with required employee contribution of 3% effective 1/1/26. Any additional questions or discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Gaddis absent, Hatfield.
Aye.
Smelker.
Aye.
Tunison.
Aye.
Bassett.
Aye.
Carlton.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
And Jackson.
Aye. The motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good work. Tammy Price. I saw her here earlier. Yep, she's hiding in the back.
She's hiding behind the pole.
There she is, somewhere back there.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I'm here to ask for you to sign the contracts from the state, as well as from SWIMBA. Pretty standard contracts. Nothing much has changed regarding the contracts, except for Swift Insure, and I think you've already had a little heads up that the state cut our Swift Insure funding pretty significantly. Last year, we received $200,000, and this year, they've only granted us $73,050. So 63.5% cut. The state is not really giving us a whole lot of information. They did indicate that mid-year, we could request additional funding. Also, in the letter, indicating that the legislature didn't fully fund Swift Insure. They encouraged us to seek alternative funding for next year if we plan to continue the Swift Insure program. I spoke with an analyst last week, and he said even he isn't sure what is going to happen with Swift Insure and whether or not it will continue next year. That kind of leaves us in a pickle. They didn't notify us until October 13th that they were looking at cuts for Swift Insure, so we've kind of been shuffling and trying to figure out what we're going to do, not just fiscally, to be responsible, but also we have people in our program, and their lives matter, too, and we're trying to give them the treatment and the support that they need to turn their lives around. So it's really been unfortunate. We are reevaluating staffing needs, but it's kind of tough, because we're not really sure what's happening, and we're not getting a lot of direction from the state. We have researched alternatives, and we'll continue to research alternatives, ways that we can serve the people in the community and help them get on the right track. The Swift Insure program is a prison diversion program, so if those folks aren't placed in Swift Insure, then essentially, they should be placed in prison. And we, over the past 10 years, we have served 85 people in Swift Insure, and so if you calculate that out, that's a pretty significant savings at $200,000, give or take a year, funding that program. We did have 51 people successful in that program during the last 10 years, and that's, if they were sent to prison, would have been $2 million per year, for every year that each of them were in prison, each of those 51 people. So I feel like our program really does save money. Additionally, they're required to get employment, they're required to get treatment, they're drug tested, they're provided cognitive behavior therapy, they're provided relapsed prevention, and they're also provided moral reclamation therapy. All of the people in our programs, not just Swift Insure, are provided with those things. So we're arming them with the tools that they need to continue their success after they leave our program. Additionally, our door is always open, and I can't tell you the number of times somebody has struggled and came back in and said, I need help, before it gets to the point where I'm committing a crime or I've relapsed. And so I just wanted to give you that information. We are working on alternatives. We're working to figure out how we can continue to serve those people. In fact, we're transitioning a few of them into the drug court. The judge, the prosecutor, and the public defender and I all met to discuss how do we handle this, this cut? First of all, the cut for this year, as well as the potential of not having that program in the future. And so we are talking about, can we open up more spots in drug court for these folks? Will the prosecutor and the public defender's office start advocating a little more for drug court, because we no longer have the Swift Insure program? Additionally, you know, I told you that everybody has to be employed before they can graduate our program, and if they're not employed during our program, then we require them to complete 30 hours of community service work each week until they get a job. Additionally, we have some statistics that the state put out for the graduates of our programs, and now I'm speaking, our treatment programs, which are drug court and sobriety court. They haven't followed Swift Insure as closely, but Swift Insure folks are given the same or similar treatment as our treatment court participants, and I believe that their statistics are very similar. Graduates from our programs in the state of Michigan would have a new conviction within three years at the rate of 6%. So 6% of our graduates from treatment courts would reoffend in three years. In the regular population, the general population, that number is 20%. So our treatment courts make a difference. Sobriety court, 19%. Drug court, 26% would reoffend, and showing a significant cost difference, but not just a fiscal difference, but a difference in these families' lives. Because every time you help one person, you're also helping their family, you're also helping the community. Within five years, those rates stay pretty close to the same. 8% of people that have graduated our treatment courts are likely to reoffend, and that number is 18%, and 22% for sobriety court, for people that don't participate in our programs. So with that being said, I do ask that you sign the contracts. We are being responsible with the money that you're giving us. We're doing the best that we can to help folks, and our doors are always open to the people that have been through our program if they need anything. Thank you.
Great information. Thank you. I can always tell when you're on the agenda, because the size of our packets double or triple because of all the paperwork that goes into them. So I'm always amazed at the amount of effort it takes to request the funding for these and the hours it must take to put all those details together. So you are appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions from commissioners? Sounds like we need to work with our state reps on this, to point out some statistics and let them know that this is an error on their part to cut funding for a program that's working and saving the state hundreds of thousands of dollars.
I would love for you to reach out to the legislators. I do have, you know, I've been keeping packets. When somebody graduates, they have to write their story. So what happened to bring you into the program? What happened during the program, and where are you at now, so that you can see a success? And we do it because it's good for the participants to see where they came from and where they are today, and to be able to reflect on that later. So I have all of these really cool stories that hopefully I, my plan is to make copies of those, reach out to the participants to see if it's okay, can I share your story? Are you willing to write your legislator and talk about whether or not you feel like this program really did save your life? So please, reach out to your legislator. Please let them know that lives are being changed as a result of the Swift Insure program.
Yeah, we just heard a little bit about this on Friday, because we were talking about the size of the jail, and, and talking to Judge Skipper a few months back, he had mentioned how sentencing guidelines were not going to change, that jail populations were not going to change, it was going to be relatively stable between 45 and 55, our current daily inmate population, and they were questioning whether that could maintain with some of these programs and cuts going away. So. So kind of threw a question mark behind some of the things we're working on. So hopefully, we can move this forward and get a resolution for this. Now, they said you can apply for additional funding mid-year.
Yes.
Which is kind of crappy way to do it, but you know.
It is. They've done that for a couple of years and they're trying to make the best use of funding. So if some counties aren't spending all of their funds, then they'll pull some funding from them and give it to counties that are short. And so they've done that for a couple of years and it works okay. This is the first year that we've had such a significant cut to any of our programs that we have concerns about, do we have enough funding to get through the rest of the year? And so, and like I said, they notified us on October 13th that we were looking at a pretty significant cut. And just so you know, our fiscal year starts October 1st. So our fiscal year had already started before they said, "Oh, hey, by the way, you're going to get a 62.5% cut to your funding."
Wow. Additional questions? Commissioner Colton.
How long have we had this program?
I believe it started, it started before I came, but I think 2012 or 2013.
And I just don't understand the sense in it. I mean, if someone does go into prison, the state spends that money to keep them incarcerated, correct?
Correct.
And this would save the state that money, but they're not going to give, give the money to them, if that makes sense?
Makes no sense.
Yeah.
Does not. Additional questions? Hearing none. The Chair would entertain a motion for approval of the fiscal year 2026 SCAO grant contracts for adult drug court, sobriety court, Swift Insure sanctions program, and the approval of net cost agreement substance use disorder services through Southwest Michigan Behavioral Health Regional Entity for fiscal year 2026, and authorize the Board Chair to sign the Motion by Colton, support by Bassett for approval of the 20 fiscal year 2026 SCAO grant contracts for adult drug court, sobriety court, Swift Insure sanctions probation program, and approval of the net cost agreement for substance use disorder services through Southwest Michigan Behavioral Health Regional Entity for fiscal year 2026, and authorize the Board Chairperson to sign the agreements. Additional discussion or questions? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Hatfield.
Aye.
Smelker.
Aye.
Tunison.
Aye.
Gassett.
Aye.
Colton.
Aye.
Campbough.
Aye.
Gaddis, Gassett, Hatfield.
Aye.
The motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will have a plan to talk to our legislators about this. Eric.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. The Airport Board has approved the amendment to Airport Manager Gino Lucci's contract for the next two years with a $10,000 increase per year. They feel Gino's done a great job, and I'll let Commissioner Tunis and Smelker talk more about that, but from a process standpoint, airport is self-sufficient. So from the cost standpoint, this isn't going to hit our budget, but the airport agreement requires you to approve any change in expenditures above $5,000. So that's why it's here before you. The City Council approved the change on November 10th, I believe. So we're asking you to also approve the amended contract, and I believe the Board will officially vote on the amendment tomorrow at their meeting.
Okay, so this is for expenditures over $5,000?
Yes.
And an increase for the manager of $10,000?
Per year, yes.
Per year.
Starting December 1st through the November of '27.
And both have already been approved by the city?
Well, the amended contract, which would be the above $5,000, is the what was approved by the city.
Okay.
So that's what you're being asked to approve today.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, we have budgeted in the, in the airport budget of $79,000. We started them out at $59,000 and we told them after a year, we will give them review. And we all felt, and John can talk about this, but we all felt that the amount of effort and the morale and everything else has come out to that airport is, people enthuse, they want to be there, and we felt as a reward for all his hard work, plus his family is dedicated out there also, that $10,000 for the next two years to fill out the rest of his contract was more than fair. So that's why we're coming to the, to the Board now.
Fantastic. Commissioner Smelker?
I agree 100% with what Bob said, and we have 100% of the hangars rented out there. So, and the morale out there is much improved.
Does this mean there's no room for the county jet?
No room for it, no. Unless you want to put in for a new hangar.
Okay. All right, scratch the jet. So nothing there. Additional questions? Okay. The Chair would entertain a motion for approval of the attached amendment to the Hastings City-Berry County Airport Contract for Airport Management Services between Hastings City-Berry County Airport Commission and Lucci Distributing for a period of December 1st, 2025 through November 30th, 2027. So moved. Motion by Tunison, support by Smelker for approval of the attached amendment to the Hastings City-Berry County Airport Contract for the Airport Management Services between Hastings City-Berry County Airport Commission and Lucci Distributing for a period of December 1st, 2025 through November 30th, 2027. Additional discussions? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Smelker.
Aye.
Tunison.
Aye.
Gassett.
Aye.
Colton.
Aye.
Campbough.
Aye.
Gaddis, Gassett, Hatfield.
Aye.
Gaddis, Gassett, Hatfield.
Aye. The motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Part of your annual process is the approval of the Road Commission's auditors. This, this cost comes out of the Road Commission budget, but the county commission is required to, by statute, to sign the engagement letter. So we're recommending the Road Commission's request to utilize Gaybridge for the upcoming '25 Road Commission audit.
Okay. I think we do this every year.
We do. And you, everyone, last year, I think everyone said, "Why are we doing this?" And statute.
All right. Questions? The Chair would entertain a motion for approval of the audit engagement agreement with Gaybridge and Company to perform the 2025 Barry County Road Commission annual audit. So moved. Support. Motion by Campbough, support by Hatfield for approval of the audit engagement agreement with Gaybridge and Company to perform the 2025 Barry County Road Commission annual audit. Discussion. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Tunison.
Aye.
Gassett.
Aye.
Colton.
Aye.
Campbough.
Aye.
Gaddis, Gassett, Hatfield.
Aye.
Smelker.
Aye.
Gaddis, Gassett, Hatfield.
Aye.
Smelker.
Aye.
Tunison.
Aye.
Gaddis, Gassett, Hatfield.
Aye.
Smelker.
Aye.
The motion is approved.
And the final thing I have for you.
And a duplicate.
Yeah, is requesting a one-year extension of our contract with Gaybridge to perform the '25 audit. We were looking at putting an RFP together. We got late in the year, getting a little too close to trying to bring in a new auditor on board. So what I've requested is an extension of one year with Gaybridge, and then next spring, we'll put an RFP out for the '26 audit.
How long has Gaybridge been doing audits for us?
A decade or, it's been a while.
Yeah, I could say probably at least eight years.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I agree. Sometimes it's good to put different eyes on the same situation just to check and balance ourself as well, so.
I don't think it's a matter of we're not pushing to get rid of Gaybridge. They've been great partners. Sometimes you do an RFP just to keep them honest, too. So that's, that is our plan. An RFP has been drafted. We'll just wait till we get to '26 to issue it.
Okay. The Chair would entertain a motion for approval of the audit engagement agreement with Gaybridge and Company to perform the 2025 Barry County annual audit. So moved.
So moved.
Motion by Hatfield, support by Smelker for approval of the audit engagement agreement with Gaybridge and Company to perform the 2025 Barry County annual audit. Additional discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Gassett.
Aye.
Colton.
Aye.
Campbough.
Aye.
Gaddis, Gassett, Hatfield.
Aye.
Smelker.
Aye.
Tunison.
Aye.
Gaddis.
Aye. The motion is approved. Unfinished business, we have none. New business, we have none. County administrators report.
A few items for you. The sheriff shared with, I think, a lot of you that Rock the Country is coming back for 2026. Dates are August 7th and 8th. We're still working with the promoters to pay the second half of last year's county bills, so we'll have more information on that as we move forward. We believe as the core group of staff that we will have a recommendation for you on the December 9th meeting for the ERP system, our software system that we've talked about for a while. We had our last proposals in, we reviewed them. We've, I think we've got a decision on who we're going to use for financials. We'll have a recommendation on payroll as well. We're still working through that issue. But there's been a lot of work by a lot of people on that, and I appreciate everyone's help on that. And I'll get more detail when we talk about that on the 9th. Labor negotiations have been kind of on a hold for the last couple of weeks. Our attorney, the mediator, and others have conflicts, so we're hoping to get back at it in early December. Been working with IT, and we'll provide more information on this in '26, to create a new IT steering committee to help guide information technology-related decisions and our investment, evaluate new uses, evaluate current programs, governance. Anything I missed on that?
I think we've covered all of it.
Yep, so just something that we, Matt and I, have talked about, and I think this will be a good discussion. We've got about nine or 10 department heads and agency heads that'll be joining us in that discussion. So more information on that in '26. Then on, hopefully on the December 16th, if not December 16th, the 1st, January 13th, I think it is, we'll have some more information on our capital investments proposed for '26 in front of the court and some other facilities. So we're hoping to have that information for you to act on, those recommendations. So.
Okay.
Matt and I, as soon as we're done, I'm heading to Lansing. It's a big day for the Zuzka family. My son's being sworn into the State Bar. So very excited about that. And I would like to congratulate Nancy Schley, Sheely, I believe, if I butcher the name, I apologize. Our newest public defender was sworn in in Judge Skipper's courtroom yesterday. So the public defender's office is full staff per the budget for the first time, at least two budgets. We've had a position we were unable to fill, and she's filled it. So we're excited about that. And I know Carrie and staff are really looking forward to getting Nancy involved. So that's all I have. Have a great Thanksgiving, everyone.
Questions for Eric?
Congratulations.
Yes.
You might, you might have some money left now.
No. We've got one more kid still in school.
There you go.
Have a good holiday, everyone.
Thank you. Chairperson's support? I am all set. Vice Chairperson's support?
Linked the Planning Commission meeting last night. Two significant items on the agenda. The first one was a request for a special use permit for a small-scale solar project on Brogan Road. Understandably, a lot of interest in that. That project was turned down primarily because, or exclusively, because it really didn't meet the need for a special use permit. Any small-scale solar project has to be approved by the local governing entity. It's not eligible to go to the state for the override program that the big consumers project could have utilized. But a small-scale solar project is a specially, what's called a special use, rather than a use-by-right in all of our zoning categories. A special use permit comes with a number of requirements, and the key ones in this case are that it really needs to be compatible with the neighborhood and not create or disrupt the normal activities that are going on there. The general feeling was that this would have. And hopefully, this sends a message to others that are looking to do small-scale solar projects that the Planning Commission is going to be very cautious about where they would consider approving that. It's going to have to be compatible with the surrounding area and not be in any form disruptive. So I think it was the first test of our solar ordinance and the fact that we chose to classify that type of project as a special use rather than a use-by-right. If it's a use-by-right, then it means that it automatically qualifies for that, that zoning classification. We don't treat it that way for any of our zoning categories, so.
Excellent. Awesome. Excellent.
Yes. Second primary item on the agenda was, we're currently doing a full review of our zoning ordinances, trying to rewrite those in a way that is more user-friendly, simpler for applicants to, to deal with. We've retained McKenna and Associates to assist in that. They assigned Jim McManus to do that, given his familiarity with, with the county. We are now in the very final stages of that. We reviewed the final sections last night, so we'll soon have a completed draft that we'll be able to send out to all interested parties for their comment before we take final action on that at the Planning Commission level, which will then bring it to us to, to review. Other than that, attended an EXAT meeting, that's the Area Community Services Employment and Training Council, which is the parent entity for Michigan Works. Like we saw a few minutes ago, a lot of financial uncertainty there because of both state and federal funding for a number of their programs. They're trying to work through that at this point, but a number of the specialized training programs are certainly at, to some degree, at risk at this point.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbough?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did attend the CAA Battle Creek yesterday. Friday last week, we had a health department meeting. We have a new health officer over there, Rebecca Condon, who appears to, although working very hard, seems to be fitting in and doing a very good job, especially when we're in this crisis with lots of budget cuts and lots of stuff trying to be figured out over there. Last Wednesday, I attended DHS and also the Thorn Apple Manor. Again, leadership, looks like it's doing very well. I did get an opportunity to look at the progress at the COA. Looks like it's coming along over there. It's going to be nice to have a new COA. I did attend the meeting last night with the Planning Commission. That small solar field being applied for was in one of my districts. Appreciate the input from Commissioner Hatfield on that. And the only complaint I had, which I did discuss with Commissioner Hatfield, was we need much improved audio over there. I couldn't help but think about our local doc master at Podunk Lake. It was, to be very kind, the audio was horrible. It had a very large crowd there, and most of them had no clue what people were saying that was presenting the application. So that's going to be addressed, and hopefully, next time we have a large turnout, some of the people will be able to hear what's going on. So thank you for your input on that, though, Commissioner. It was very well taken.
Thank you. Commissioner Tunison?
Also attended the health department last Friday with Bruce and Catherine, and I think we're going to be looking into, there's going to be a fee increase January 1st for all residents of Barry County and Eaton County on, on everything down the line as far as wow, septic, restaurant inspections, everything else. So I think we're trying to work with Rebecca, the new director up there, and Eric to try to use the money that we set aside from the budget to help the residents of Barry County not absorb that. And at least we're trying to look out for our residents. The fact that the budget cut came over in Eaton County, which has caused a lot of this, so we just didn't, we don't feel that it's the backs of our constituents to have to absorb that too, so we're looking into that. I also want to commend Commissioner Hatfield on a marathon meeting last night and 9:30 and poor man didn't even get dinner, right? But the thought that they put into this, look out for Berry County and the ruralness of our great county that we have, I'm glad that the message was sent last night. And the amount of people that were there opposing this means that they really care about where they live. They really care about our rural identity and they live out in the country for a reason and they want to see that changed, so I appreciate the input from him on that. Airport meeting tomorrow and that's about it until after Thanksgiving.
Mr. Smolker.
Airport meeting tomorrow, as Bob said, yesterday was transit and 911. And I'm just getting back to work, so.
Glad you're back to work and feeling better, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Colton.
Commissioner, an aging meeting today. I'm looking at the rain.
Oh, yeah.
If you go to the men's room, it's Commissioner aging now.
They better have the tarp up, Mike.
They have a tarp up that collects the water due to like a five gallon kettle that I can say occasionally empty, so they're real anxious to get in today. They don't know where, you know, it's a flat roof, make you figure out where it's coming from in that roof, you know, you travel all along.
The combination bathroom shower is very efficient, so, you know.
I didn't think of that. I just have another question. So on the solar panel zoning and such, and they split from, you know, you got ag and rural residential, mixed use, all this and such, is there not an appropriate place for your solar panels?
Well, it is a small scale project, which is a project of less than 50 megawatts, which makes it not eligible for state approval as opposed to local approval. They're all special uses, which means that they can conceivably be built in most of our zoning districts, but it's going to have to meet a full set of criteria that are very well laid out in the definition of what qualifies for a special use. So would it be more likely that it would meet those criteria if it were in, say, an industrial zoning area than in a rural residential area? Yes, but.
Gentlemen, can I interrupt just for a minute? Somebody's got a CRV tan in color and it's parked in the judge's slot. She's wanting to get removed, so we either have a tow or anybody in here have that?
Is it in the staff lot? Is that spot?
It's in her parking spot.
It doesn't say it's her spot. It's mine.
Okay, can you, yeah, so you went on the tow.
Oh, okay.
There you go.
Looking to tow it if you want.
I made a good example of that. Jim McManus was talking about another client of theirs, which is a township in a, not in this area, but they're looking at a large scale project that I think he said was actually going to take up 60% of the land area in the township. And they are welcoming it with open arms. So a lot has to do with, you know, how the community feels about it, and this is clearly, he didn't name names, so I can't even tell you what it is, but it's probably a small township under a lot of financial duress and that kind of tax base is, yeah, an overwhelming factor for them.
So how are you dealing with at a smaller scale? Do you even have to do with houses that are putting solar panels on their roofs?
No. If it's for personal use, yeah, it does not, it's not subject to this ordinance. That's an, that's an exception. But if it is scaled to the point where it's providing significantly more than what the property itself requires, then it falls under a commercial use classification and is subject to this.
Okay. We will hear from Commissioner Bassett when she comes back from moving her car. So, and just to make a couple of comments, I had a note on this to talk under Commissioner comments as well. We did have the jail charrette on Friday, scheduled to be a four hour meeting. I think we knocked it out in about three and a half. A lot of details. And as we said, we spent $40,000 on the initial, just report, very detailed, have been looking at that, going back and forth with the consultants on their plan, our plans, getting input from lots of different people who utilize the jail to really kind of narrow that down. It was scheduled initially to be a six hour meeting that because of the framework or the, you know, the pre-work that was done, we ended up doing it just over three, three and a half. So really a good step forward and probably, as you've heard, some of the interesting things were, as we were being quoted, seven and eight hundred a square foot on 63,000 square foot facility. Numbers were anywhere from 35 to 50 million and the numbers that we got back or heard at least at the beginning were substantially less than that. So that was kind of enlightening, inspiring, hopeful that a county of our size could potentially pull something like that off. So there's some renewed hope and enthusiasm that we can get our brains around this and work towards something. We, it's a, it's a long process, so although that report will be available to the public soon, within the week, hopefully in a couple of days, we'll see, it is a short week that, so that information will be out there for everybody to see. But then we're going to drill down even further on this and take a look at all budgets and to see where we can put that together, because if we could do that without any type of attacks on the public, that would be awesome. So, but we are a long ways away from that process, that we haven't started that process yet, because we don't have a number yet. So we have to go through the design phase before we get to the actual details on what those numbers will look like and what they'll be, but as we get closer to that, then we'll move forward with a plan. But in the meantime, we can certainly start looking at all budgets, all things and see where we can possibly make some adjustments. I've already thought of a few things, so we just haven't had a chance to sit down with Eric and Jeff and go through some of this stuff, but we will. So like I said, this process, we didn't anticipate that it would be done in a month. It may be a year. The next step, at some point in early 2026, we'd like to bring the consultants back and do a presentation to the full board, so you'll have access to everything we have access to. You can get an update on what we're thinking and we can get your input pushed back, redevelopment, design before we move forward. So that's also very important, so we'll get that scheduled at some point, so. But all in all, I think a very good meeting, a lot of very good information, very detailed information, so I think that was well received by the committee and by people in the audience, so appreciative of all the time and effort put into it. A lot of people have spent a lot of time thinking about this and detailing this and giving their input to what is best. Everything from community mental health to the size of the jail, to transit, transition. I mean, housing, there's so many things that people have thrown out as ideas, trying to mold this into something that creates a safer community for Berry County. So just a very good program altogether and we got it done a lot quicker than we thought, so.
Mr. Chair, one little thing.
Yes.
Side note, you know, we need to, we need to move, you know, because like they said, a million dollars a year goes, a year goes by fast, you know what I mean? I mean, I know this is a process, but I think there's a lot of, like you just said, a lot of enthusiasm and you always want to strike where the iron's hot, right?
Well, since we scratched the county jet, maybe that opens up some more money, so you know, I got no funding there for it, so.
Right, right.
Okay, with that said, limited public comment at this time. Any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes.
Mr. Chair, the students from the Christian School, they had an assignment, so they're probably sitting back there saying, oh, good, maybe I don't have to do that. I think it's encouraging to see these young people. They're bright and they're, they have a lot of questions about life, so.
Thank you. Good morning. I was just waiting to make sure that we didn't interrupt. I have four students today that are going to talk to you, discuss different things. My name's Mrs. Rosma. I teach them life skills class. We call it Scola Vita because we are at Berry County Christian School, which is a classical education school. So our students that are going to be presenting here today are just our four from our Hastings campus. However, after we came two weeks ago and we listened and we watched, our Middleville campus recognized that their student council would like to come and watch. So we have more students here today, but those ones are just observing as, as we see how this all goes down and everything. So I'm going to introduce each one, so I'll call one up and he or she will do their presentation. I'll step aside and when they're done, then I'll come back and I'll introduce the next one, because they have no idea who's going for second, third or last. And I like to keep it that way, because I like to keep them on their toes.
Who drew the short straw?
Exactly. So if you four would come on over here and step up, we're going to start with our Middleville senior, Jacob. Thank you.
Morning, Jacob.
Morning. I am Jacob DeYoung. I'm a senior at Berry County Christian. I am very thankful to be able to come here and speak to you today. I am not from around here, I'm actually from Alligan and I was, we had to pick one issue that sticks out to us, so I was a little lost at first of what I was going to pick and then I noticed, like any other place, everybody has a homeless problem in their community. And I noticed it on like Thursday, I think, I was driving through Hastings. And I looked into it and I've seen there's a lot of things you people, the people of the community do to help them with food and things like that. And then I was just wondering if there's anything more that we could do to help them, get them on their feet and to get them back working and get back in the movement of things in life, you could say, I suppose.
Absolutely.
And, yeah, I was just wondering if you have any changes that you could, or something we could put in to help these people, is what I was wondering.
Yeah, now typically for public comment, because people like to come up here and say all kinds of fun things to us, that we don't respond to public comment, because it's your time to address the board for whatever is on your mind. So I will take the time to say that that's a great thought and especially with all of the crisis you see on the news every day with food, with shortages, with stuff like that, that Berry County has a great safety net with collaboration between many different departments. So they really do an outstanding job of not only just, you know, food availability and reaching out, but through United Way and a lot of other, a lot of other services, they do go to a great extent to try to help those people out. So there's a lot of housing planned and one of the things that we have been talking about is people that come out of jail, is there a safe space or someplace to take those people to help them get jobs, as we heard from our Swift and Sure cuts, that we're trying to help people get on their feet before they go back into the environment where they came from, so they can make better choices. So, but great comments, great thoughts, well presented too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very confidently presented. Appreciate that, so.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Eliana Morford. I am student council president of Berry County Christian School of Middleville. I recently heard of a new law that was passed by the state of Michigan that updated the sex education standards in public schools. Schools can now teach sex education to as young as third graders and introduce gender studies to students. Schools can teach students to, and I quote, "Define gender identity, gender expression and sexual orientation and explain that they are distinct components of every individual's identity. Two, explain how biological sex, gender identity and gender expression are distinct concepts and how they interact with each other. Three, explain that a romantic, emotional and/or sexual attractions can be towards an individual of the same and/or different genders and that attractions change over time." Middle schoolers are taught to examine various considerations, examples, personal and/or family values, cultural and societal norms and beliefs for determining emotional readiness for sexual behaviors. As someone who works in childcare, I do feel that third grade is far too young to be teaching sex education in the way that public schools teach. So my first question would be where you all stand on this matter, whether or not you agree with the law that was passed? And if you do stand against it, my second question is, therefore, is what power you have to change or regulate laws that Michigan, the state of Michigan passes and if you have a plan in place to counteract this law in any way?
Okay. We don't address those type of laws. Those are state level decisions that are being made, so I can tell you, knowing this board, I feel everybody would support what you're saying, that we would not be in favor of anything of those things. However, we have very limited power to address those things locally, except working with our local school boards, you know, working with the people in charge of that to be sure that they institute policies that follow what we believe is more conservative based here versus what the state may be pushing at this moment, so.
Okay.
Very well done.
Very heavily with our representatives.
Yeah, and we can talk about those with our state representatives, which we all know very well. And we would encourage you to, to do the same thing with that information that's very well documented, very well put together, so they'd appreciate hearing from you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eliana.
Hi, my name is Alyssa Nystrom. I wanted to talk about teen health in Hastings. Approximately 31% of youth aged 12 to 17 had or have mental disorder, behavioral problem. This statistic is in 2022 to 2025. And I have looked up the Hastings Public High School and it said there was no detail on having a school assembly on teen mental health. I know my school doesn't have these assemblies, so I was wondering, in the public schools, do they have them? Then do you, as county commissioners, run these school assemblies in private schools in Berry County?
Yeah, county commissioners don't really have a lot of interaction with public schools, you know, for that matter. Again, that would be something to reach out to your local school boards on. I agree with you that mental health is an ongoing challenge and there's a little bit of a wrestling match at the state right now to go to a, almost a private payer system versus the system they have now, so there's a lot of concerns. And this board has supported resolutions opposing that, because we feel we have a very good Berry County community mental health right now working for it, but that may be something to talk to them about in detail as far as reaching out to our youth to let them know that there's help available if needed, so. Very well done, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, last but not least, Tristan.
Good morning, Berry County Commissioners. My name is Tristan Strong. I am a senior at Berry County Christian School. At school, I participate in soccer, wrestling, baseball, dinner theater, and anything that keeps me out of the principal's office. I hope to graduate this spring and begin working in skilled trades, preferably in construction, although this is contingent on my dad letting me graduate. I know one of the upcoming projects in Berry County that is needed in a jail, is a new jail. Although I personally don't ever want to necessarily need a jail, it is an important part of the infrastructure where we live. Speaking of a jail, do you know the difference between jail and school? Let me explain. Both have group projects, but in a jail, it's called a gang. Both have doors that lock, one keep the bad guys in and the other keep them out. In jail, you want freedom, in school you want, just want the weekend. In jail, you get three meals for free, in school you get one and almost. In jail, you get three meals for free; in school, you get one, and almost worse. Except at my school, if the BCCS lunch ladies are watching, your food is amazing. In both places, you have to share. In jail, you share a cell; in school, you share a Google Doc. Okay, enough humor. Our jail unfortunate, our jail unfortunately, I was unable to attend informational meeting last week due to being incarcerated at school. But after a few productive and unproductive conversations about the jail, I think it's important for our commissioners to consider a few important factors. Appropriately sizing the jail with room to increase its size in the future, provide safety for staff of the sheriff's department, focus on mental health in an effort to curb repeat offenders for returning to jail, and limit the cost to taxpayers, similarly in how you were able to successfully build a commission on aging building. Remember, based on all of our ages, taxpayers like me will likely see this jail built and be alive for the next jails we built fifty to sixty years from now, and paying taxes on it the whole time.
Great information, and we agree with all of that. I think sizing is important, being sure we think about not only now, but the future of it, and again, the emphasis on community mental health and, and how we address that to ongoing, to create a safer community is very important to all of us, so. Very good thoughts, very good things, and I hope that we never see you in the jail as well, so, uh, and good luck with your graduation as a senior, so. And hopefully you can maintain that good posture and poise and run for commissioner someday as well. You can help us solve some of these problems, so.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tristan.
Thank you so much for taking the time to listen to our seniors. Um, as they prepare for graduation, they have a, a, a year-long project to present, and so this helps them to have that opportunity as well. But it also was our, November is our civics responsibility, and so this was also kind of tying it all in together, so I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Very confident group, and they're welcome here anytime. We appreciate that, so thank you. Additional limited public comment.
Scary way, I think, four things. First thing you probably do, you could pass a resolution against that, uh, the sex ed program of the state of Michigan. It says something that, you know, that you've been asked by a constituent to do that. Uh, the second thing is, uh, numbers, I'm not saying people are lying and stuff, but numbers are, is, is not uncommon to get skewed. When you start breaking down, well, the numbers for incarceration, well, includes a building. The building's already there. Includes, uh, heat, heat's already there. Includes, uh, staff, staff's already there. So while the number may be broken down to look at a large number, sometimes the consequence is better than trying to find more programs. So I would be, you know, concerned about, well, if we have a consequence that prohibits or that, not prohibits, but discourages the lack of, uh, people violating the law, consequence is a better thing as compared to, well, let's find a program to help them, because sometimes these people just don't want to be helped. I'm not sure the number, for me, reaches the amount that, you know, when you're looking at fifty people. And I do have a personal experience, or not personal experience, but a person that was in there, uh, I think it was Judge Skipper asked a person, that, "Why are you here?" Well, because the first time, this was on a person that had a second offense, I think it was in the drug or alcohol court, I don't remember what, you know, but they said, "Because the first time, didn't do nothing but take some money from them." There's no consequence. So consequences are a good thing. Uh, when it comes to the Health Department, uh, you got an abscess. It's called Eaton County. You've been asked numerous times for years to split the Health Department. Uh, that is, what I'm hearing needs to be done, because Eaton County has a problem that is drifting over into, we gotta start taking care of things. So to realistically look at splitting the Health Department, I can't, you know, after hearing the reports I heard, it, it's, it's time. Find another partner, or split and go off by yourself, because Eaton County is dragging the Health Department down. Added fees, after they just added fees, I think in September, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, I can't remember when it was.
No, we, we passed a budget amendment. We'll get it till the first of the year.
Well, as I said, so continually, you know, people retire as a fee, of fees, so. Uh, on, uh, the jail, once again, that was a part of the thing there, the waters get muddied when it starts talking about where to build the jail. The waters are not muddied if you don't let them get muddied. The only place to build that jail is where the infrastructure is at, where it currently sits. There's nobody that's going to come up and give you a piece of property with the infrastructure sitting there, so it needs to be done, and that needs to be just cleared up right away. Everybody, you know, economic development, you know, when you start muddying things, at a million dollars a year in additional costs, it's needed to take, just like Bob was saying, it's, it's needed to move forward, not take up to another year. Designed, in twenty twenty-two, I gave the commissioners-
Summarize your comments, please.
Yep. In twenty twenty-two, I gave the commissioners a proposal of how to pay for a thirty-three to thirty-eight million dollar jail. The money was there in the budget. The money's there in the budget to pay for this one. You may have to make some adjustments, but in reality, it can be done, it should, and even sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment.
I can't let this go, but I think that young man over there needs to be on our committee.
He was- summed it up very well.
Yeah, he's spot on on a lot of things there, so, uh, he's been paying attention. Uh, the other is, uh, the young lady over here, uh, there's a law out there about giving sexually explicit material to children, that's anybody to the age of eighteen, and we'll cross that line when we get, uh, brought into it, because I'm sure that's gonna be coming in my office, so, uh, that has to do with the, the requirements that they sent down from the, uh, was it Board of Education, was it? So I'm sure, may and a bunch of other sheriffs will be having a look at that, so, uh, that's, uh, one of those decisions our judges are gonna have to make here pretty soon, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment.
I'll pass.
Dang.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, other business, we have none. Commissioner comments, Commissioner Bassett.
Um, so, uh, sorry to get in the way of my car, uh, but I've had quite a few meetings in the mental health realm, um, the Berry County meeting, the regional meeting, CDE, and Substance Use Task Force. Um, the biggest thing going on in, in those arenas is this DIT, uh, the reguspro proposals from the state for the inpatient program, still ongoing. Another opportunity appeared for another way for us to, you know, plus loosen that RFP, and we need some of what we have, and so, um, a lot of that's gonna be settled here in the next few weeks, so stay tuned with that. And so, also, we're back with the judge on some issues as well, so, uh, we'll wait and see. We have significant change in our inpatient and mental health environment in Michigan, so it's very important. Um, I'm not by a conservation district, mainly in Orange County Township, um, and then in general, Bob and I had a chance to meet, you know, so it's hard to work on that committee. Um, and then, uh, great news is that, I know Berry, Berry County Foundation and Bonnie Geddes, um, has, has come here and presented some opportunities for some, um, ways to make housing more affordable in Berry County. We were looking at community land trust, it was one of the most recent presentations. And I just wanted to let you know that the Berry County Foundation did pass an alternative program, and, uh, that was passed last week, and it's called Berry County Homes, which is an acronym for Home Ownership Made Easily and Sustainable. And this is something that Barron has developed that basically gives us the, the same sort of a, a program without the community land trust itself. And so we turned to this because it seemed to be a difficult way for us to do it, uh, the community land trust on our own, and we didn't want a purpose on outside of our community, because this is a community-driven project, so we developed our own program. And so this is final, and, um, super excited about it. I think, I think Bonnie will probably come and give you a more complete presentation on this, but, um, this is gonna be a great opportunity for us in Berry County. Um, yeah, I did, uh, work with Berry Township, and we have submitted a grant, RFP, grant, RFP, uh, letter of intent for us to receive funding for our staff, so this housing development and development, and, uh, we're applying for one point five million for infrastructure for that development, and, um, we'll see how it goes. We have submitted plans, we have submitted this document, because it does give us a way to creatively help, uh, people get mortgages below market value and, um, get rid of them. So that's been submitted, and also asked for a letter of recommendation from our board chair, just recommending us to, uh, to get this grant, so we're, we're hopeful, and we'll be requesting a form of negotiation in this area, so.
Excellent news. Thank you. Commissioner Colton. Commissioner Smolke.
Nothing, except I agree with Mr. Strong on school being like incarceration. And that was a long time ago.
Commissioner Tooterson.
I'm good, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Campbell.
Um, first of all, thank you so much for the, the youth participation here. I think that is one thing that shows our county is gonna continue to be as successful as it is because of youth involvement. Uh, they are our future, for sure. Uh, talking about the homeless, the, the subjects they performed today were just amazing. The homeless, I, I was just driving in Battle Creek the other day, and they're on the corner, and somebody's got to sign up and stuff, and I said to my wife, "How do, how do we reach those people?" You know, we have, we have the system set up everywhere that if you go into a place and you sign up and you do the paperwork, there's help available, but how do we help the ones that are out there already? You know, maybe, maybe, maybe we have a, a mobile system set up where you actually try to go out on the street and help people find the direction to go on these things, because it's very intimidating to go into an office, you're already a homeless person on the street, that, that's just not gonna happen. So, uh, and the gender issue, I, I think we, we make a big mistake when, when we expect third graders, fourth graders, fifth graders, eighth graders to be making adult decisions. And, uh, I think that's where we miss it on our youth with, with our gender. The mental health is, uh, mental health is never a problem until it's knocking on your door, and then you realize real quick how serious our mental health problem is. So hopefully we can continue to go on that. And as far as the jail committee, I think we need to sign that guy up. I second the sheriff on that. I think we do need to get some youth involved in this. Our youth have, all have parents, and our youth has a big influence on their parents, I know. So I, I'd love to see that gentleman get involved a little more with our jail proceedings. Thank you.
Your daughter, that's the actuary, can help us out with the money too, so, you know, who knows?
She hasn't helped a lot with mine yet, but, uh, maybe.
Maybe. Commissioner Hatfield.
Uh, we have, uh, had on a couple of occasions, uh, the need to, uh, review the use of tax increment financing on some, uh, housing projects. Uh, that is an issue that is only going to become, uh, a bigger, uh, issue for us, primarily because the state has changed their brownfield, uh, rules. Uh, it used to be that TIFs could only be used in a true brownfield project, uh, but they have in the last year, uh, amended that so that now any, uh, residential project is also eligible for the same TIF program that used to apply to brownfields. So, uh, it, it's, it's another tool. Uh, the city is taking a, uh, Hastings is taking a close look at that. Uh, they've hired, uh, a consulting firm, uh, that, uh, has come in and conducted a couple of educational sessions for the, uh, Hastings, uh, Brownfield, uh, group, as well as the city council. Uh, that, those sessions are, uh, primarily being conducted by Travis Alden, who you may remember was the head of our Economic Development Alliance, Chamber of Commerce. Uh, they're doing a great job, I would say, so far, that, uh, we have hardly scratched the surface on understanding how TIFs work, uh, who really bears the cost of a, of a TIF, uh, how they can be, uh, employed in a way that is fair to all concern, both the developer, the taxpayer, and the community. I would encourage, uh, everyone at this point, when the subject of TIF comes up, to keep an open mind. Uh, we need to, uh, yeah, have a, a, some similar education sessions that really help us understand, uh, you know, how they can be used, uh, and how to make sure that, uh, everybody's interest is benefited, uh, not just a potential developer. So I look forward to, uh, you know, participating in those discussions.
I agree. When I read that the state was opening that up, that tells us that, A, there's a housing problem, but B, we're gonna see a lot more of this, and, um, I just think that we need to do a more thorough job reviewing these applications and being sure that everybody's protected, not just the developer, but the taxpayer, that there's gotta be, and certainly from the local units of government, the townships, they have to have their blessing on these before, but I'd like to have some oversight in that as well to help guide the process, so. But I agree, education is key.
I, I think the real key to, uh, TIF, and I had a chance to talk with, uh, Bob and John a little bit about it the other day, uh, yeah, it, it, all too often, it's, okay, here's the maximum TIF that this project would, would qualify for, that's what we want. Well, the fact that that's what they want doesn't mean that that's how they, you know, what they have to be given. And I think that particularly for the host governmental unit, uh, you know, be that the city or one of the, one of the townships, they need to take a, a very careful look at what the long-term cost of that development is going to be for them, and make sure that that portion of the TIF is captured for their use, uh, and then what's left can be used for a greater public, you know, purpose, uh, i.e. reducing prices, reducing, reducing rents. But if they don't do a good job of that, then ultimately, the taxpayers throughout that municipality do end up paying a price, so, uh, the, I, I, I don't think in a lot of cases that that kind of analysis has been thoroughly done or consideration given to, okay, it may qualify for a ten million dollar TIF, but we're only going to give it to them for, yeah, half of that, and it's not going to be a thirty-year TIF, it's gonna be a ten year TIF, or a five-year TIF. So all of those things are, are negotiable. We need to make sure that we understand what is negotiable, what's not negotiable, and how do we equitably use that, so it's a win-win for everybody.
Yeah.
It's a great tool, if it's used right.
I just think that we, as the county and the final decision-maker, need to be involved in that process earlier versus later, so we can help the local units guide that process, where we have a little more information and insight sometimes than they do, so, you know, so, but that's a great discussion to have in the future as well. Thank you. Um, Commissioners, great news.
You know?
We're gonna get to see each other next Tuesday again, so. Didn't want you to forget, we have interviews next Tuesday, December fourth, so be sure you have that in your calendar, so we will see each other again. Then we're gonna have another meeting the following Tuesday, and our final meeting the following Tuesday, so although it's a little, we're moving our, um, last BOC of the year up a week, so we'll have three meetings in a row in the month of December, so you know. Um, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Really, we have a blessed community, we have great collaboration, really impressed with the people we get a chance to work with every day, and all the boards we serve on, the townships we work with, there's just some great people who really give a lot of time and effort and energy, so very thankful to be involved in the community, thankful to see our youth here. So we appreciate your participation as well. We want you to continue to come as well. And, uh, for those of you who don't know, there is a little bit of a football game on Saturday, so pay attention. Um, I was kidnapped in Ohio- I was kidnapped in Ohio and brought to Michigan, so I'm not gonna tell you who I'm rooting for, but it'll be an interesting game. We'll see. Go Blue. I've heard, I have heard that before. I have heard that before, so anyways.
Say that right.
Stay dry. It is gonna be wet, cold, windy, snowy, all those other things out there, so be safe, and we will see you next Tuesday. Thank you. We are-